Hearing to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 128, 2019.
Second. On the question, this piece is being taken from the table and placed in Seventh Order for a final vote. The resolution concerns the settlement and mutual general release of 500 Lackawanna Development regarding the UDAG loan in the amount of $550,000. Anyone who wishes to speak on this particular piece of legislation may do so during Fourth Order Citizens Participation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Date Held June 26, 2019. 3B Breakdown of Eligible Salaries for the Liquid Fuels Account for the Months of April, May, and June 2019. 3C Liquid Fuels Tax Fund Independent Auditors Report for the Period January 1, 2016 to December 31, 2017. 3D Check Received in the Amount of $2,262 from Goodwill at North Gerald T. Langen Apartments, which is payment in lieu of taxes for the City of Scranton. 3E Controllers Report for Month Ending June 30, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one announcement. This July 20th coming up at 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is going to be the Operation Car Vet Car and Bike Show at the Circle Drive-In. It's going to be family-friendly car and bike show. Car and bike registration is $10. General mission is a voluntary suggested donation of $5. All proceeds benefit the American Legion of Post 568 and the Veteran Promise of NEPA. Multiple classes will be judged and awarded, including Best in Show, Top 20 Best in Show. It's going to be rain or shine. I think we all know what the weather's going to be the next couple of days, so we kind of know what to expect. Wear your sunscreen. If you need more information, you can call 570-892-2060. There's going to be entertainment, Kids' Bouncy House, food and beverage, and there's going to be local businesses set up with their vending stations. So, please come out and help support the vets. Thank you.
Just one announcement regarding the mayoral appointment by council. Council's working on this process. We've collected 16 letters of interest and resumes from potential appointees. I'd like to thank everyone who made it a submission. We're reviewing them and we've begun discussing our next steps. Tentatively, we're hoping to hold interviews next Monday with candidates and then move from there. So, there will be a public advertisement placed in the newspaper regarding when these interviews are going to take place, and there will be more to come on that. Secondly, council will hold a public caucus in council chambers with Pell on Wednesday, July 21st at 12:00 noon to discuss the city's exit plan, 31st.
Fourth Order, Citizens Participation.
Our first speaker is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. With regards to the appointment of an interim mayor, assuming for the purpose of discussion that the mayor starts serving on, let's say, August 1st and serves for approximately five months, 5/12ths of $75,000 salary is $31,250. So, someone is going to get paid for five months of work. I assume there will also be benefits. Now, in my opinion, we don't need someone who's simply a signature block or placeholder. We need a full-time interim mayor. So, if the candidates have full or part-time jobs, it should be a given that this will be a full-time position, and it may be more than 40 hours a week. And anybody who cannot do that, that should disqualify them. And they should not be able to sit in the mayor's office behind closed doors and conduct their own little business. They will be a full-time interim mayor. And I have some questions I would suggest you might want to ask the various candidates. Keep in mind that this interim mayor has to oversee the preparation of the 2020 operational and capital budgets, and he has to work with the audit for 2018. The auditors are here right now. And he would be, he or she would be responsible for any major personnel changes that may follow the fallout from the FBI investigation. So, these are some questions to ask these candidates. First of all, I think you need to make sure that they have a level of financial literacy with regard to government operations. How familiar are they with the operational and capital budgets and how they are created? I know that Mr. Bolzoni has been doing 99% of that work, but the mayor is the one who is responsible for it. How familiar are they with past audit findings? And they should also be looking at what has the auditor missed in prior years. Remember, the auditor's never caught the double pensions, and the auditor should be taking a microscope to the Lips Department. And I mean, that's during this next five-month period. How familiar are they with the city's bond rating and what may cause that rating to go up or down? And how familiar are they with the status of the municipal pensions and issues involving union contracts that could affect those pensions? How familiar are they with the city's progress in exiting Act 47 distress status? How familiar are they with the provisions of the Home Rule Charter and the charter's And how familiar are they with the pending litigation against the city, especially involving the sale of the SOAR Authority and the ramifications if the city should lose that lawsuit? In other words, this interim mayor is going to have to earn his pay, so take a hard look at all the candidates. On another issue, does anybody have a status on Kyle Armbruster and whether he's on paid leave or unpaid admin leave? Is he still in the pokey?
It's a personal issue.
Okay. And also, if you read this morning's newspaper on page 1, I want to let you know that if you want to stay cool, one of the places you should go is the Scranton Public Library, where they have free Wi-Fi and computer access. And by the way, you don't have to buy anything at the library to get to use the restroom, like some businesses we know. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Ferrantis?
I want to address something to you, Mr. Rogan. I definitely don't feel that you should be mayor and council. You can't be both. It's two different branches of government with specific, clear, and different responsibilities. You get to be mayor who has veto power over council, of which you sit. You vote for legislation as council, and then the mayor decides, which is you, whether to approve it or not. You don't need to be here. It's an egregious abuse of power. It's a massive conflict of interest. We have four people. We don't need you sitting there. We don't even need four. We have three. So, why are you still sitting here? Is it legal? And are you getting paid double?
The answer on the last question is no. I'm not getting...
What's the last question?
Regarding pay. I'm getting paid as a council person. I'm not getting paid as the mayor.
Okay. But do you still think that you, that's neither here nor there? All the things...
You asked the question, so I was answering you.
Yes, and I thank you for the answer. But I also said, it's an abuse of power.
The Home Rule Charter states that in the event of a vacancy in the mayor's office, the council president becomes acting mayor.
Does it say you maintain the seat as council?
It doesn't say to give up your seat on council either, and that is partially...
It doesn't say.
During this time period, because of that, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, that's why council is not passing any controversial legislation. And at the same time, I've made a point that there are not going to be hirings or firings as interim mayor.
You are voting on certain things, like the $500,000 thing tonight that was tabled. You're voting as a council person. You could veto that as the mayor. So, don't say you don't pass...
If that type of situation arose, I would certainly discuss it with my colleagues.
Well, in the meantime, I still said, it's an abuse of power. It's an egregious abuse of power. It's a conflict of interest. You shouldn't be sitting there. There's no rea, we don't need you there. We have four people.
You're entitled to your opinion, but the Home Rule Charter states otherwise.
I'm just saying, the Home Rule Charter does not say that you could still stay there as council. It said the acting president could be mayor. It doesn't say it could resume his seat as council. We disagree, and I assure many of the people in the city feel the same way I do. I'm just stating it. And that's my point, and that's my opinion, and I don't think it's right. Now, you started, that's also starting off on the wrong foot as far as the new administration, considering what Corpride did, and you're one of his buddies. When you had that meeting two weeks ago, back in the back room, the governor's room, you said it was because there wasn't enough room here. Look at this room, and there's a balcony. You can't tell me the people that were in that room wouldn't fit here. There was no microphones in there.
There wasn't enough room in council's office.
There was no cameras in there. I'm speaking. What did you say?
I said there wasn't enough room. I said normally this meeting would be held in council's office. There's not enough room in there. That's why it was being held there.
No, you could have, Pat, that's an excuse. You could have had it in here.
That's what I said.
How many, could I talk without you interrupting me?
If you're speaking accurately, sure. The floor's yours.
I didn't ask a question. I'm asking, I'm speaking. You said there wasn't enough room. We're not talking about back in the room. Out here, we often have caucuses out here in council chambers, many times. Jaden Evans said when she was president, if they couldn't come in front of here, they didn't come at all. But you're great for having meetings in the back room so nobody could see them on camera. So, that's an excuse. No, they wouldn't have fit back there, but they certainly wouldn't, would have fit in council chambers, and they would have seen what was said and heard what was said. We couldn't even hear back there. I was in the front, couldn't hear one word. No microphones, no cameras. That's, I'm just trying to say that you're starting off on the wrong foot already. Now, as far as mayor, Mr. Rogan, do you plan on running in November?
No, I don't plan on running.
For sure?
For sure.
Mr. Donahue, do you plan on running in November?
I'm exploring that possibility.
Mr. Evans, I understand you might be...
Might be what?
Going for this appointment. And if you do get that appointment, which I wouldn't mind at all, because I think you're certainly qualified because of your financial background and the work that you've done. But would you continue, would you pursue running in November then?
No.
But is that, council said you were going to stipulate that that wasn't going to happen, but there's no law that says you can't. So, how do you stick by that?
Well, I mean, that's what I said. At the first meeting, we talked about that. I said it would be wrong if anybody took the interim position and ran for it, and I'll stand by that. That's all I can tell you is I will not run in November if I'm...
But if somebody else were to run, get appointed other than you?
Yeah.
And they decide to run, you can't stop them though.
No, constitutionally, you can't stop them. No, you're right. Legally, you could not stop them.
Okay. Well, so the stipulation doesn't mean too much, but...
Well, I didn't know that at the time. I felt that was the right thing to do, is to say that we should not have the person run.
Well, I just want you to know that if you do get it, I'm behind you because...
Well, thank you.
I think you're qualified.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. You know, we've had so much confusion, what's going on in this city. I don't, I think an appointment that was going to be made should have never restricted anybody that was going to run from running in November. Okay? Why waste your time doing this as an interim bookkeeper, so to speak? You're not going to really get anything accomplished that you could take further. So, I think that was just a total waste of what we're doing here, because you're not going to get the competent people we do need or the people interested from the Scranton area. I've heard all about this nonsense about residencies from out here and out there. Now, if you don't live in the city, then you shouldn't be appointed or run for any office in this city. We're the ones that know our city best, not somebody from outside the area, and that's where it should come from. And this nonsense of an appointment by either party in November, it should be an open election. Candidates should run and let the people choose for a change. We've had enough of the political machine in this city over the years and years and years of bought and paid for politicians. Let the people decide who they want in the city of Scranton for a change. Instead of saying, well, we could bring somebody out from out of the area. It was just like Rothschild brought up, we could bring people from here or there. No, if you're not in the city and you can't work in the city, you shouldn't be here. So, that's one of the things we need to do. We don't need another political party like the Republican Party of Lackawanna County has no business being involved in the city business. Just saw what they did in the commissioner's race, where they turned around and endorsed in a primary. You don't endorse in a primary to anyone unless there's only two people running at that time. To take out a sitting commissioner just tells us the credibility of what the Republican Party was all about. They should not have any involvement in Scranton. Okay? And to do this, thanks, what I think a suggestion would be best dealt with, everything the mayor does has to come before council, so to speak. Let council take the position till November. There's room for everybody here to make that decision. Sit here, go over whatever has to be addressed in the city. We do it here all the time. The mayor puts stuff in. You're dealing with the Law Department. You still got to make the decision. So, why appoint somebody we're not, nobody's going to be happy with? We're never going to get a damn thing done, and we're never going to get the stench off us in this city. I think council should just take that responsibility, because you're going to wind up with legal litigation over this whole thing right now, and you guys all know it. So, avoid it and let council take the responsibility of being the mayor and the council till you run in November, and all this nonsense goes away. And then let the people choose in November and open it up as an open election, not just appointed people by the parties and open it up as a general election. And let the people in the city, for a change, be able to open their mouth and say something. And I think that'll make a heck of a difference around here. Remember, all the candidates crisscross this city from all over the country, and Scranton's got a stench on it now. It's business as usual. That's all you hear everywhere I go. So, let's try and make a change today, and you guys could do that right here and now. The other thing I want to bring up, and I've been pushing this, was over the parking garage at the mall. I had a meeting with Mr. Basaliga. I went personally to see him. We sat down and we took up the agreement. I have all the agreements that were done here. There were 500 parking spaces. What this council needs to do to satisfy all of us in the city where 500 parking spaces are, who put up the $4.5 million, who's responsible for it? Did it come through bonds? What's the city's involvement, whether it's the parking authority that still exists for some unknown reason? We need to get to the bottom of it. One thing I could assure you, Mr. Basaliga has nothing to do with the parking spaces, and I was one of the proponents here, bitching about it, that why doesn't he give us the spaces? Why doesn't he come here? Well, he has to pay to park his own car in the mall, and so does his employees. The responsibility of the 500 parking spaces needs to be with the people who took this agreement that was signed as successor's entitlement. It's just like buying a property with an easement. You get what you buy, and that's what you're doing. And what happened with the parking garage now is we need to bring them here, sit them here, and get to the bottom so these people here, everybody out there watching, could get their 500 free parking spaces, if it's city money that's gone into this deal, and end this issue once and for all. Because this is the other part of what we're calling in Scranton, is, just a moment, and I'll be done, is the dirty politics in the city of Scranton. And there's no bigger stench than the SOAR Authority and this parking garage nonsense. But it should end with you guys right here till November.
Thank you.
And maybe we could turn the city around and get some credibility back.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Mr. Mayor, Lenny Serebrows, Scranton resident. I understand that this mayor thing is the main, biggest thing going on, but does that mean that the Kaiser Valley flooding problem is just thrown away? You know, I put in my time here, keep trying to get answers to resolve the problem. I believe I deserve an answer. A different answer than send a letter to the engineers, send another letter to the engineers. We didn't hear back yet. Send another letter to the engineers. And that's the best I've gotten in three years I've been coming here. You know, I thought that the council members is supposed to help the Scranton residents. Doesn't seem like I'm getting any help. You know, we all agree, the engineers were out there about a year ago. You know, to open up that pipe that was shut down about 10 years ago, you know, they were supposed to do it, well, last year, you know, it was the end of the season. They said next year they'll do it. Now, I'm not talking about the drainage pipe right near my property, which is a problem that's been blocked forever. I'm talking about that drainage pipe that they closed off at the corner of Briggs Street and the end of the North-South Road. I thought something, I'd hear something by now, but nothing at all, you know? Just send a letter. Send a letter. I think we all agree there is a climate change and the flooding problem there in Kaiser Valley. It's continuing to get worse, and it is. Mr. Perry, you were talking my language when you talked about the car show up at the Circle Drive-In. Could I have that phone number again? I didn't get it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll even, I can give you a copy of this if you'd like afterwards. But I'll repeat it again, just in case anybody else is interested. For information on the car show this Saturday is 570-892-2060.
Thank you. Okay, I know that council is going on recess. When you're back, how about getting an answer, you know, from multiple people looking into this? I just believe that I deserve, you know, for the time I put in, and I could get some kind of an answer instead of just, you know, a bull story or the same old, same old. Sorry, I'm just getting over a cold, but I knew I had to come here and say my piece before the recess comes up. So, I'll be back when you guys get back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. If Joan doesn't stop coming up with all these good ideas, we're going to Shanghai her in the mayor's spot. Once again, I see in the paper that we're reviewing our NRS contract, and I think that would be a good thing. At least it's time to put a little scare into them. And what I find egregious about these problems where somebody gets charged with graft is that quite frequently around this area, the people that are supplying the money and the incentive to do this aren't bothered, and they get a simple, small slap on the wrist as opposed to the other, the public official, and it's wrong. Once again, our, we should suspend recess, and it really would be helpful if we moved these tonight so more people could be involved. And hopefully, they won't come up with all kinds of problems or come in with a lot of consternation, because we just covered something that wasn't covered. You know, you have to act as mayor. That's okay, and there's no, there's no description of what else you should do. So, that brings us to the Home Rule Charter. It's time to revise it and take some of these situations into consideration. It's really, really to a point where it needs to be renovated, and maybe we could cover things, and hopefully, we won't ever have to use them again. It's pretty bad when somebody loses their office after a year and a half. Leaves a lot of time in between, and certainly, no matter what you do, it's not going to be the people's choice of who they would want to vote for in either party. So, but anyway, one of the problems with hiring people outside of town is you don't have the same concern. If somebody has to live inside the city, then that's, they're more concerned with what's happening to the city. They have an investment in the city. They may own property in the city and hopefully, and they don't want to see the neighborhoods go down the tubes. Now, getting to last week with the pothole situation, we really need to get better inspections of the potholes. It's just all over. I see work being done on recent paving, and a couple of weeks later, there's a big divot there. And I seen a blue, which must mean the water company, and sometimes I see yellow, which is probably the gas company. And it's just a shame. We need a Plan B on that, because it's really not being done correctly, and it's probably going to cost us a lot of money down the road. There's actually missing, in some of these potholes that I mentioned, missing asphalt now, where it looks like the map of New Jersey or Delaware or Pennsylvania, and it's now there's asphalt pulled up and just a big hole and dirt showing. Is that the four and a half minutes, or is that five? Okay, just so I know, because last week...
The first one's the warning.
All right. Well, that kind of covers it, and try and do your best.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth Order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yeah, just very quickly, I just want to take time, and I know my colleagues will speak on this a little bit. I just want to thank everybody for their letters of interest that were received this week for the vacancy of mayor for our city. I know it takes a lot of time, a lot of thought, and a lot of consideration to actually put yourself forward and knowing full well the job at hand, on a good day, the job at hand of running our city is immense. So, I can only imagine what those people must feel walking into a situation right now where we really need a fantastic leader with the qualifications and intestinal fortitude to do the job at hand. So, I appreciate everybody who stepped forward to submit those letters of interest along with their resumes. And I know the five of us are right now currently poring over everything. Well, again, we'll talk more of the process and how we're going to handle that. I know Mr. Rogan already did. Speaks, Mr. Bowles made a comment about having the council stay on as the executive branch until November. Unfortunately, you know, we've been eating and sleeping this process for the last month now, and that's just something that's just not, it's just not by law available. If we don't make a decision within 30 days, if council fails to make a decision on an appointment, the judges will just make that decision for us. So, we don't have the even, we don't have that option to stay on. So, we don't have the even, we don't have that option to stay on as the executive branch and keep the city running until an election in November and swearing in in January. It's just not, it's just not on the table. And the whole time, the process and the mindset behind this council was to take this decision of the mayor out of the hands of the few and put it in the hands of the many. And that's why we don't want it to go to the courts. We want, we wanna make this short-term appointment right here with five, and then give that, give that to a November election. Now, the November election isn't perfect either, but that's the system that we have. Right now, how it's gonna work is the November election, if there's any independent candidates who qualify with a signed petition, they're gonna be able to be on the ballot as well as any, as well as the two parties' candidates that come at their choosing. There won't be a primary like there normally is, but the general, once the Democratic Party, Republican Party, and any qualifying independents, they'll get them chance, they'll get their chance on the ballot, and then there'll be an election. All the plans that were laid out to us to get ourselves a leader that we need, I felt and we all felt, but that was the best way to do it. You know, we did not wanna have to make a decision of the five of us to see who was gonna be in charge of this city for five years, or for the next two and a half years. I think that was just, that was just too immense. So, you know, that's kinda the situation that we have right now. And, you know, we're gonna make the, next week, we're gonna make painstaking measures to go over and talk to as many candidates as possible. I guarantee you, every candidate who's submitted a letter of interest will be contacted and notified, and if we get a chance to interview everybody, we will. If not, you know, that just might, but everybody is going to be notified and contacted. Because again, that is something that, when you take the time to submit a resume and a letter of interest for a job this immense, it comes with a certain, respect works both ways, and I think we owe that to everybody, and I thank them for stepping up to do their role. And also, Mr. Srebro was here with that ongoing problem that you're having. I'm gonna just, you know, you wanted a different response, and I'm thinking as you're talking, I'm like, you know, not being an engineer and not being able to dig the hole myself, unfortunately, we're at work, and I know I say this quite often, we're a conduit. This body right here is a conduit to get citizens' issues and issues in our community into the right hands of the people who can actually get the problem done. And the problem right now hasn't been fixed, even though we have given that information to the people who have the ability to fix it. So, sometimes that's kinda where the roadblock is. You're coming to us, we already went to them, the problem's not fixed, you come back to us, and, you know, we already handed that off to the people who should have that taken care of. Now, if there's not information coming back toward, to the resident, then that's also an issue. So, that's kinda where we are right now. Is there an issue? Is there a timetable? So, I'll make a, I'll call the engineer myself in the next couple of days, and I still have your number, Mr. Srebro. So, I'll get an information off of him and see where we are with this. But unfortunately, you know, it's just, that's just not something that we delve into every day. We get, we make sure we take the information, we give it to the right person, and, you know, I, nothing, nothing feels worse than someone coming for me for help or one of us for help, and we're not able to fulfill our obligations. You know, it's kinda, it's definitely not satisfying. I know you don't, you're not happy with it either, or why should you be? But that's something that we'll just keep working on. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yeah, very briefly. A little before the noon deadline, I delivered to our city council office my letter of interest for the interim mayor position. This was not an easy decision for me, and those closest to me know how much I struggled with making it. But in the end, at this moment, at this time, and in my heart, I feel I made the right choice. So, to the many people who urged me to bypass this entire scenario and run for the full two-year term in November, thank you for your support and your kind words along the way. I know you may be disappointed in this particular decision, but I know that you care more about Wayne Evans the person than Wayne Evans the political candidate. So, because of this, I now am a candidate for this position. I will be removing myself from the decision-making process to appoint the interim mayor. These four capable gentlemen to my right will now have the full responsibility, and I know they will take it very seriously, and in the end, they will do what they believe is the right thing to do for the city of Scranton. So, that's all I have tonight. Who knows what the future will bring? In the meantime, every day is your chance to make the city a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to visit the 300 block of Harrison Avenue. Mrs. Reed has been helping me with a property on this block. I visited with the neighbors who lived next door. I thought 913, 950 Island Street was one of the worst homes that I had seen in the city in regards to being blighted, but this one might be on par with that. The people who live next door are elderly, they have been calling the city over a number of different years. The interesting thing is that this house has not been occupied in 20 years. The porch is falling in, I could go on and on and on, but anyways, I am going to try to get together with the council, the Lips Department, to see if we can find some sort of resolution to that issue. Also, we received a complaint about 107, 109 North Sumner Avenue. I talked to the neighbor last night about that, so we're gonna try to help him get that safety issue taken care of. Also, Mrs. Reed, 950 James Avenue, property's been abandoned since 2013, it's been foreclosed since 2014, same thing, issues with the property, quality of life issues. Also, Mrs. Reed, if you can check when the utility project is set to begin on Orem Street, I've gotten several calls about the condition. We were in touch with DPW, we did receive word back that they weren't gonna put it on the paving list or improve it because the utility company's doing a project, but they would like to know at this point when that's going to occur. Also, the city was awarded a Greenlight Go Project grant in the amount of $135,200 from PennDOT for traffic signal replacement at Greenwood Street and Wyoming Avenue, and the city's gonna put up $33,800 as a cash match. I also just wanna say that I'm still obviously going through all of the resumes that were submitted. I think now we're at 16. I would like to thank everyone who submitted their name. In the last few weeks with what has gone on, I've actually never been more hopeful for the city. Never in my five and a half years have I had more hope, and that is because I have spoken to so many people in this city who are not ready to throw in the towel, and they are not ready to give up. Last week, I met with some neighbors up on East Mountain, same thing. People have invested their time, their money, they've lived here their entire lives, and they're hopeful. So, whoever the next mayor is, if it's Councilman Evans or any of the other 15 people that submitted their names, I think all of us, this council and all of the people in the city, need to rally around whoever that person is because for all of the negative things that you hear about Scranton, and some of them are true, there are a lot of positive things that have gone on in the last few years and that are currently going on. One of the things that we have going for us in the city is our people and our neighborhoods. We have very strong neighborhoods, we have very strong neighborhood groups. I think whoever the next mayor is really needs to focus on holding our neighborhoods together. That is the most important thing, I think, that is gonna have to be accomplished here in the next few years. Because once the neighborhood, neighborhoods goes, then we're in trouble. So, I think we have great people, we have strong neighborhoods, we need to bring people together, whoever the next mayor is, we do need to stand behind them. And as I mentioned last week, there's no place to go, in my opinion, but up. So, you know, I pledge as a member of this council, and I think my colleagues would agree with me, that we are all gonna work together, we're taking this process very seriously, and we're gonna try our best to make the best choice for the citizens of Scranton. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments regarding the appointment. I'd first like to thank everyone who reached out to me and encouraged me to apply. For me, the timing certainly wasn't right, and I really do appreciate Councilman Evans stepping up, as well as the other 15 people who have put in, put in their applications. It is, as I'm seeing, as acting mayor over the last few weeks. It is a very important and very stressful job, and it's one that certainly requires 100% attention from the applicants, although it's something I would be interested in doing at some time in my life. I have a one-year-old daughter at home who I love spending time with, so unfortunately, the timing for me wasn't right. But I do appreciate all those that have put in, especially our colleague, Mr. Evans. Just want to remind the folks who did apply, and we did mention this at our, at our first meeting, we are requesting the applicants not to contact individual council people to lobby them, and we've also asked them not to contact others to lobby us. We wanna do this process, do the interviews, debate amongst ourselves without any outside influence from other people involved in politics or the community trying to pressure council people to vote for a certain candidate. I know that's happened unfortunately in the past when there's been appointments for city council. I know all of our phones rang off the hooks during that time period. So, we're hope, you know, we wanna do this process amongst ourselves. Obviously, if there's members of the public that have input, they're free to speak at our public meetings, but we are going to work through this process. I think we have a good idea of how this is going to go as far as having the special meeting to hear from candidates, whittle it down, and then debate amongst ourselves and come to a conclusion. One important point I do wanna make, and I think all of us up here expressed support for having a special election, but a special election does not happen unless council makes an appointment. If it does go to the courts, then the courts would make a pick for two and a half years. So, this is a very critical process for council to come to a consensus regarding one of these applicants for the short-term, six-month appointment to allow that special election to take place. That is all.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption. Resolution number 128, 2019, approving and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to enter into a settlement and mutual general release with 500 Lackawanna Development Company concerning project number as noted from the Urban Development Action Grant Program for a loan in the amount of $550,000, passed by Resolution number 39, 2006.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. We had a caucus before the meeting with Attorney Kelly from the Redevelopment Authority, Attorney Gallagher, who represented OECD, and Mary Pat Ward, who's the executive director of OECD. I'm gonna be voting in favor of this legislation if for no other reason than if we all vote against it after speaking with everyone in the caucus, we're gonna continue to embroil ourselves in further costly litigation. This has been going on now for a number of different years, so that would be one reason that I would vote for it. The second reason is that this vacant lot that currently sits next to Buena Pizza on Lackawanna Avenue will become now a tax-producing property. According to the settlement agreement, the owners of this property now will either have to put a building, some kind of improvement there, or make it a green space. And the third reason is the city would get, the SRA would get $197,000 now free to redevelop other projects or other properties or to start another development project. So, again, the benefits here, in my opinion, outweigh the, outweigh the negatives. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, on the question, I wanna touch on the SRA component for a little bit. That is truly the silver lining in this process, is the critical funding of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority. You know, I've long been an advocate for the creating more active and re-energize SRA, and strangely enough, this legislation found a way to do that. And to put $197,000 into the SRA is gonna be a big, big deal for them as well as the city. And if they use that properly, we can see some, some great activity going on in the city with that money. So, that's all I have.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.